Yes. Well, wait a minute. It wasn't in snacks. Thirty percent. It did go. I wish. Where's Paula? Uh-oh.
No, we gotta connect Denise Jackson.
There he is. Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, 6:00 PM. I would like to welcome everyone to the Peoria City Council's special meeting on the budget. I'd also like to welcome everyone who's here in our chamber audience, as well as everyone watching tonight's meeting on our YouTube channel, City of Peoria TV. A notice was received by Councilmember Jackson of the City Council in accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16,00142. Councilmember Jackson would be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to Councilmember Jackson's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the City Council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by Councilmember Jackson to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the City Council, and the presiding officer shall declare Councilmember Jackson present. Hearing no objection. Sorry about that. Sing. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the role. Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer. Member Graham. Councilmember Jackson. She's here. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Reaganback. Councilmember Ruckregal. Councilmember Velpula. We have a question. Present, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Everyone, please join me in standing for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag United States of America to the Republic where it stands, one nation, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two dash three-five-zero is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Can I get a motion to approve move by Councilmember Ruckregal, seconded by Councilmember Kelly? Ballots. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
This is unanimously.
Twenty-two dash three-five-one is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to approve the estimate of taxes to be levied in the amount of $27,981,048 at a rate of 1.3534 pursuant to 35 ILCS 200 slash 18 dash 60.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the estimate of property taxes. I'd like to ask Director Craddy to just simply provide a quick summary for you all.
As was said in the packet, the levy itself has a rate that is consistent with last year. It is the same rate as last year. We are seeing a 4.3% increase to overall EAV in the city. So the levy in front of you captures that new growth in property, but it is not a tax rate increase on the levy. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
And just to follow up, this is the estimate. So this is, you're not approving the levy tonight. This is just the estimate that we have to have that adopted and put on file. There is then the property tax levy ordinance that will be adopted as part of the final budget adoption.
Questions for Director Craddy or the City Manager? Can I get a motion to approve? Councilmember Jensen?
I move to approve the estimate, the estimate of taxes to be levied in the amount of $27,981,480 at a rate of 1.3534.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I have no question.
Thank you. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah.
Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two dash three-four-eight is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request for discussions on the 2023 revised budget.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the, as we kick off, the 2023 revisions to the second year of the biennial budget that we have. What we're going to be doing is walking through our proposed recommendations for both revenues and expenses. We'll talk a little bit about fund balances, about staffing, and then look ahead at some of our other challenges that we see out to the future. I'm going to turn the floor over to Director Craddy to walk through the presentation, and I'll jump in and add color commentary as we go along, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. There's a number of slides to get through, so we're going to try to get through them as fast as we can, and we'll be happy to answer any questions as we go through it or at the end.
Time.
The first set of slides really is focusing on the economic picture globally, as well as in the U.S., because I think that is always what we have to look at when we're talking about our budget. And economists estimate the U.S. GDP growth to be 0.3% in 2023. That is down from what the past few years have been. The Fed's efforts to combat inflation will likely lead to recession at some point during 2023, leading into 2024, is what most economists believe at this point. In terms of unemployment, national unemployment is at 3.7%, which, for the most part, is considered to be normal employment. Unemployment rates are very low at this point. State unemployment sitting at 4.8%. Peoria has an unemployment rate of 6.2%, but that is down from 8.5% one year ago, and that equates to around 1,100 new jobs in the City of Peoria this year. As the manager laid out in his beginning remarks, most of the content we're going to be looking at is going to be a comparison to the budget that we presented to you last year for the 2023 budget. So this is going to be that revision. So, for example, on this slide, we'll be looking at what we had budgeted last year in comparison to this year. In terms of revenues, we're up 11.7%, and that is including $14.4 million in fiscal recovery funds, which Council had discussed as part of their planning session back in September. In terms of operations, our operational costs are up 2.8% budget-to-budget, and that restores staff as well as programs. Looking on the capital front, and we'll get into this a lot when we start looking at some of the slides on grants, as well as our projects, capital is up 37.5%. This includes CSO projects for year two, additional grant funding, as well as roads and drainage. In terms of debt, it is, our debt payments are up 5.5%, and that's to meet our debt requirements, and we'll talk a little bit about why that increase is occurring in a later slide. Just wanted to start off with a few 2022 budget highlights. We have seen strong revenue growth, specifically looking at our local and state sources. Looking at our state sources, and we'll talk about it on the next slide, we are seeing growth that was not anticipated last year during the budget and is going into the recommendation that the manager and I have made as part of this budget. Federal and state grants continue to remain strong. Obviously, we've gotten the announcement of the SAFER grant in the last month. We have received numerous grants for violence prevention. We have, we're still using our ARPA funds for small businesses, as well as neighborhoods, and we are continuing to get capital grants for a lot of the capital projects that are ongoing. The other thing to keep in mind with that is even as our revenues have grown, we're still on pace to have our expenses be on track with budget. So those revenues haven't necessarily equated to an increase in expenses. So that is something that we will kind of talk about as we go through the budget. I wanted to go ahead and walk through where our revenues are looking like they're going to end for 2022. And I'm going to kind of go across the screen. Real estate transfer, that's up 30%. Properties have continued to sell in the city, and that's why we've seen almost a 30% increase in those transfer taxes. And as we get into the next slide, we'll look at what our estimates are for 2023. In terms of state, in terms of sales tax, we have our home rule sales tax is up 2%, and our state sales tax is up 8% year-over-year. The other area to look at is our hotel restaurant, our hotel and restaurant taxes, which have started to recover post-pandemic, especially the hotel tax side, is up almost 26%. Our sewer and stormwater fees are up 10%, which really goes back to our ability to collect on those fees. Licenses and permits are the only area that is down, and we are adjusting that as we look at the budget next year in terms of what our recommendation is.
And really, the two- But if I could, some of that was also council action. If you remember, we did, for some of our licenses, we waived them last year or reduced them, so that was a portion of that, and why the numbers are down as well.
On the slide, I think the area that needs the most attention drawn to it are the bottom two numbers. That is the income tax side, as well as the corporate income tax or PPRT aspects of the budget. Just for context, income tax is up 34%. That equates to about a $5 million increase over the budget. In terms of corporate income tax, we had budgeted $9 million. We're looking like we're going to come in closer to $22 million at the end of the year. This has, this has been a record year for income taxes from corporations. This was not even in, IML, when they brought out their projections last year, had a 30% decline, and that is how we ended up at this $9 million number, down from 12 million last year. So these numbers are, have been performing at a level that we didn't necessarily anticipate, nor have other communities that I've talked to anticipate these being at these levels. And as we get into the budget and looking at this coming year, you will see declines for our estimates in these areas because of the fact that they've been at record highs. Looking at the 2023 revenue estimates, as I mentioned, with real estate transfer taxes, we are anticipating an almost a 40% decline. That's still in line with what traditionally the city's seen, which is around a collection of about $1 million. With the rising interest rate market, the housing market is just not moving like it has been, we anticipate a reduction in those taxes. We are anticipating a slight reduction in home rule sales tax, as well as state sales tax, primarily because we are looking at the possibility of a recession at some point during 2023. Same with hotel and restaurant taxes. If we are in a recession, those two areas will also be affected. Sewer and stormwater, we have up 1%, and we have a recommendation on the next slide that we'll talk about. License and permits, we are anticipating a 5% increase. And then, like I said, on those areas, the income tax and the corporate income tax, those two areas are based off of IML's projections as of today. Those always can and will change as we get through the budget process, but as of right now, that is the recommendation from IML on where those revenue sources will be this coming year. And for context, with PPRT, that's still around $16 million, which is still up $4 million from what we had anticipated as part of the original 2023 budget. This slide's looking at those numbers in totality, as well as looking at both our projection for 2022, the original budgeted amount for 2023, as well as the revised budget that we are presenting to you tonight. So as you can see, we had originally anticipated a 4.8% reduction in where we were going to be as part of 2023, based off of last year's budget that was presented. We're now anticipating a 3.2% increase on our local sources as a comparison to the 2023 budget. So we're looking at around state sources of around $156 million. In terms of assessed value, we discussed it as part of the item tonight for the tax levy estimate. We are seeing a 4.3% anticipated growth in assessed values, but we are not recommending a rate change for that, so we will just be capturing new property value. We are also recommending to freeze the CPI increase that is automatically in the stormwater utility ordinance, and if Council is amenable to that, we'll bring that ordinance back as part of the budget packet when, when Council approves the budget. In terms of state, federal, and other sources, it has the same look and dynamic. We had originally anticipated a 17% decline in this area last year, or in comparison to this year, the budget. We are now anticipating an 11.7% increase year-over-year, primarily on the back of PPRT. And so that, that's really the area that we're seeing our largest growth in our state sources. Looking at expenses, we had originally anticipated a 6.1% decline in comparison to where we are with the projection for this year. We're now anticipating a 9.6% increase. The reality with this line item is we didn't necessarily anticipate the amount of inflation that we're seeing, especially in supplies, and that's why you will notice on here, we're looking at a 19.7% increase on supplies. That's really your, you know, your road materials, all of those kind of things. The market is still hot because of inflation on what those costs are.
At the same with the capital, because it's just-
Correct. Looking at staffing, the Council this last year has added 21 staff from the original budget. If you remember, Public Works brought forward converting 10 temp employees to full-time employees. In essence, those were employees, but just because of how we calculate FTEs, that is an increase of 10 folks in Public Works. And as part of the SAFER grant that the Fire Department has received, that will be an increase of 11 positions for the Fire Department during 2022. Looking at 2023, the budget recommends six additional positions that we will discuss on the next slide. That will increase the staffing up to 677 employees, which is about, up about 3.8%. I think just as critical that we need to mention on this slide is we still have over 50-plus vacancies, heavily in police is one area, that we are, that staff is still working really hard to get filled. And so those obviously also have a budget impact in terms of our budget being lower because those positions weren't filled, but those are positions that we anticipated trying to get filled in 2022, as well as 2023. So there may be some movement on how many people we actually have in-house at any given point, but the authorized amount that this budget includes is 677 employees. Looking at the recommendations within the budget for the six new positions, we have within diversity and inclusion, an additional management analyst for greater internal and external reach for the department. In legal, it is an attorney to run the revised administrative adjudication system. For fire, it's a hazardous material inspector to focus on billings, inspections, and plan review. And then within public works, we have three positions. We have a vehicle mechanic to oversee, to service the fleet. We have a green infrastructure coordinator to oversee stormwater and vegetation operations, and a right-of-way asset manager to assist Public Works with permitting and data collection. Just want to go back and just briefly show here the recommendation for the use of fiscal recovery funds for not only, obviously, 2023, but 2024. This was built off of the Council's direction in September, so we're anticipating spending $14.4 million in 2023, and then the remaining amount of $10.3 million in 2024. And I think this is where we start getting to the slides that are, are fun to watch, to look at, and have really been an area that we've seen a tremendous amount of growth, and that's on our grant funds. So we have, within this budget, $7 million for the MacArthur Corridor. That's state funds for infrastructure and development. We have $2.5 million for street lighting, which are state funds for streetlight projects across the city. We have $2 million for an upgrade to our CAD and records manager, our record system for ECC. That's a federal, that's a federal grant. We also have $2 million for sidewalks, which is a federal earmark for sidewalk infrastructure in the 61605 zip code. We have $600,000 federal earmark for sewer extension along War Memorial to the Pringle Technologies Building. That is on top of the $1.6 million that is allocated for use of ARPA money, so that total project is $2.2 million. We also have $400,000 for Spring Street, which is a federal earmark for Green Street. We also are anticipating, once again, to get $1.9 million in CDBG funds, $723,000 in home funds, as well as $161,000 in ESG funds during 2023.
So Director, if you could jump back to the, to the earmarks. The, the first earmark, the CAD record system earmark, is an earmark from Congressman LaHood. That is still working its way through Congress, so if, if something happens, that spending bill doesn't go forward, this project would be pulled back. Same on the next slide with the sidewalks for 61605 and the sewer extension to Pringle Technology of 600,000. Those are two other pending earmarks, the, the $2 million for 61605 sidewalks. Congresswoman Bustos has put into the budget, the federal budget, and Senator Durbin has put in the $600,000 for the sewer extension for War Memorial Drive. So, so those three projects are working their way through Congress. We're very hopeful that those will come forward. We did receive the paperwork on the Spring Street grant, so we're filling that out, and we also have received the paperwork on the Harrison demolition, so the $1 million for the Harrison School demolition is in the budget, and it was in this year's budget, so we're planning on spending those dollars as well.
Can you clarify, Manager, on the congressional-directed funding that's going through Congress that has not been finalized yet? Is that something that we could actually vote on without it being finalized?
We, we can. I would, I would just want Council to know that you're, you're doing it with the understanding that we wouldn't do the project if we don't receive the funding. So we would come back to you and, and have to, if it does, if it falls through for, for whatever reason, and it is Washington, it could be for any reason, that we would have to pull those projects back.
So they're built into this budget?
They're built into the spending plan, but we would pull them back, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other area that I wanted to discuss was our support to other agencies. This is, and a lot of these are ongoing. We have $542,000 to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We are anticipating $900,000 for the Civic Center, which is consistent with what was in their budget that was presented to you about a month ago. We have $100,000 for Arts Partners, another $100,000 for the Downtown Development Corporation. We have $75,000 for the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council. We have $100,000 for Distillery Labs, $278,000 for the Peoria County Animal Control Services, and then in a totality, with all of the existing RDAs that we have, we're looking at $947,400 in TIF subsidies as part of those redevelopment agreements. The 2023 Community Investment Plan, as we had outlined, currently has $62.8 million in capital spending. Of that, 79.1% are for roads, sewer, sidewalks, and traffic. I think this is a really good stat. Almost 91% of those projects has a direct impact on citizens. 21.9% is for tools, technology, and facilities. So as was laid out, the spending plan is broken out into these buckets. We have $62.7 million anticipated for 2023. We have $75.7 million because of the grant funding that the manager has laid out in the budget for 2024. And then, as you can see, the capital spending does slow down in the out years at 38.7, 53.9, and 45.3, really because we don't have anticipated grants within those years for the capital improvement plan. Here are some of the major projects, and there's two slides of these. We have $7.6 million for the Combined Sewer Overflow Reduction Project Year Two. As remember, this is year two of the 18-year, 18 years of projects as part of the consent decree through the EPA. We have $5.6 million for Adams and Jefferson Signal Conversion, the one-way, two-way conversion. We have a little, about $5.1 million for the completion of the Depot Street parking lot. We have $3.3 million for drainage improvements from Deerbrook Drive to Green Street. We have $3.3 million for Glen Avenue, that's from War Memorial Drive to University. We have $2.2 million for the sewer extension from Pringle, $2.1 million for sidewalks and ADA ramps in 61605, the $2 million for the CAD RMS improvements. We have $1.8 million in fleet recapitalization, $1.7 million for GPSD O&amp;M for city-owned sewers, $1.39 million for drainage repair program, $1.38 million for roadway infrastructure projects, a little bit over a million for the Combined Sewer Overflow Reduction Project Three projects. That's in essence, that's getting those prepared to do in year three. We have a little bit over $1 million for the Gale Avenue, University, DeSharon Avenue Mill and Overlay, a little bit over a million- A little bit over a million for the MacArthur Highway from Moss Avenue to Dr. Martin 13th Drive reconstruction. And we have $1 million for demolition and clearance. There's a lot of other projects in there. We just kind of had to stop at those because we would have been here all night going through the projects. But those are the major projects that are included in the CIP.
For this coming year, I think this is about 70% of the entire capital budget is on these two slides.
As I mentioned earlier, we do have a debt increase on our payments of about $1 million. That is heavily due to two debt issuances during 2022. We had issued around $10 million for facility-related improvements. We'd also issued around $10 million in debt for the Depot Street project, which is being funded through the Warehouse District TIF. Both of those in totality are increasing our debt payment next year by $1 million. In terms of fund balance and looking at where we're going to end in '22, currently, the projected unobligated fund balance in the general fund will be a little bit over $54 million, which is 50% of our operating expenses. If council remembers these conversations, our policy is 25%. Due to anticipated growth in our pension obligations, the recommendation that we're making is to use this fund balance amount over that 25% allotment and have it be assigned for future pension obligations. That way, we are making sure our operations are staying consistent while also making the required contributions that we need to make through 2027 for our pension obligations. Overall, use of fund balance in 2023 is about $398,000. But I also want to keep in mind that some of that is planned spend-down of capital expenses in both local MFT as well as motor fuel tax, the state motor fuel tax fund. So those were anticipated to be using fund balance on those projects. Just to kind of explain and show why our recommendation is the way that it is, this slide shows where our pension contribution will need to be by 2027, and that's at $38.8 million. Putting that in context of our overall general fund budget, that would be about 37% of our general fund operating budget. Currently, as a reminder, in terms of how we're funding our police and fire pension plans, we are funding those through the property tax levy as well as our PPRT funds, which we are allocating additional PPRT funds in this budget due to that growth that we are seeing. And then any additional amount that's not covered by those two revenue sources, as of right now, we are doing a transfer from the general fund to make up the difference of our required contribution. And so if we have those two revenue sources not reaching the levels that we anticipate, we will have general fund transfers that need to go up to meet those requirements. This is the budget outlook for 2021 through 2027. As you can see, looking at 2022, this is where we have almost a 25% increase to our fund balance. And as the spending plan is laid out right now, that would have us draw down that $25 million through 2027. It would have us have years, obviously, that we are running a deficit budget, but it would be that planned spend-down of the fund balance that we have to ensure that we are keeping our operations consistent. This slide, I think, shows pretty much the same thing. As you can see, we have a large jump in 2022 because of these, I would almost say, one-time large growth in state sources and has us drawing down that fund balance to a point that we get in 2027 to a little bit below our fund balance policy. But that is something, obviously, council could take up in future years as we look at the budget. So just looking at the timeline, obviously, we are meeting tonight for the initial review of the biennial of the budget. On the 25th of October, we will have the budget hearing as well as an additional discussion. We currently have on the calendar four discussions on November 1st as well as November 8th, with a tentative approval of the budget on November the 15th, depending on how the discussion goes. And with that, I'll turn it over to the manager for anything else.
You know, the last sentence in the second to the last paragraph of the budget transmittal states that the unanticipated state revenues afford the city several years of fiscal certainty. And I think that's, if I had to summarize this budget this year, that's what I would state, is that what we tried to do was to provide a budget recommendation to you that took into account the fact that we do have some unanticipated state revenues, but we also have some significant grant funds that we can put towards capital as well. But we wanted to be mindful of the fact that we have this large obligation that we have to pay going forward. And this is a way that we can take the unanticipated state revenues and use those to pay arguably what is a state-directed problem that we have at the local level, which is funding pensions. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have and look forward to getting those questions to you and putting together budget report backs for next week.
Thank you. Great presentation, great news. And it looks like from this proposed budget timeline that we have one, two, three more opportunities to discuss the budget, and hopefully, we can adopt the budget in mid-November. But we have at least three, well, I guess, really four, counting November 15th, to discuss the budget. I want to start with one question, and then we have some lights on here. Are there any pending grant applications out there now that might be factored in next year?
Yes, we're, you know, we're, council approved last week for us to go forward with two grant applications for passenger rail. So that's, you know, certainly underway as one aspect. There's a Smart City Grant that we're going to be looking at, trying to apply by December 1 to get that in, that has no match, which is nice, I like carrying a grant, a federal grant that has no match to it. We have not yet heard from our $85 million mega grant for Pioneer Parkway Extension. So that's out there, that we're still hopeful that we'll hear something positive on that front. But we don't have any response back yet on that aspect. So there's still a few other grants that are out there that are in the works. Choice Neighborhoods, I think, is one that kind of the community has looked at applying for, I believe, or is working towards applying for. So there may be some others that are out there as well.
So the mega grant application was for 85 million?
85, coupled with about $54 million of state and local match to go along with that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to clarify the discussion on the excess fund balance going to pensions. It's projected at the end of '22 to be at $54.2 million. So would that be over several years drawing that down to 25 million? Or is that proposing putting the $29.2 million in pensions now?
No, it would be anticipating drawing that down through 2027 instead of putting all of it into the pension funds now.
Okay. And then on the staffing side, and maybe it's in the bigger book, and if it is, I'll look for it. But if you could give us more information on the proposed management analyst for diversity and inclusion. I hear on a weekly basis from staff and the public that other departments in the city are short people and unable to respond. But I've never heard someone say that we have a staff shortage in the area of diversity and inclusion. And also, I guess, kind of would like to get an update on what the actual diversity and inclusion staffing that we have looks like and what the, how the role has developed since we implemented it. Because I don't think we've really ever had a touchback point on that to understand what's done there, what may or may not be short there, and what the drive would be for needing more staffing. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got just a few questions. Actually, I got a lot of questions. I'll be calling them more to make an appointment with you because I don't want to stay, keep my colleagues here for an hour or so of discussion on this. But great job on the budget. Thank you very much for this report. I went through one time, and I'll probably need to go through with you in a couple more times. But overall, in the big picture, just for our constituent here in Peoria, so far, in my first go-around, I've not seen any raises at all in property taxes and CSO fees, stormwater fees, in any type of fees this year. Am I correct in this assumption?
The only anticipated fee that we left in is a dollar per month increase in the residential garbage collection contract. That's it.
Okay, but that was in from prior?
That's been, that was voted on by previous councils and is established to run for the next several years.
And because you said that, I see in my first go-around that finally, we're, it seems like the revenue are meeting the expenses. It pays for itself, basically. Is that, am I correct?
It is. It's actually anticipated to chip down the fund balance a little bit, the deficit that we have in the fund balance of the garbage fund as well.
Okay, so there's no increases anywhere in the budget besides?
The only other area that we'd like to come back to you with a larger discussion on is on parking fees, both monthly, special event parking fees, and in both downtown and the Warehouse District. They have been raised for several months. The Public Works team has done a really good analysis of what those rates are and with some recommendations about where we should take them. So we'll bring that back for council's consideration at a future budget discussion.
That's great, because as a part of my next question, since parking is the only area that we're looking at raising fees, I'd like to, and on page of the three-ring binder, page 10 and 11, we're talking about vibrant downtown, and we're talking about raising the parking to $1,458, basically. My question or report back, just to go along with what you said, I'd like, I'd love to know, or have some type of report so we can see what would happen to our HRA tax, because we're about $10 million. If there's no parking fees downtown and we have a vibrant downtown, would that be, would that make sense for, would our revenues be higher on HRA side to make up for the $1,500,000 or not?
I don't know if I could answer that in the time we've got to work on the budget. I mean, that's a challenging question to look at, at demand of what that would do from a parking standpoint. We own four parking decks. We own significant parking lots that require maintenance and cost and upkeep. And to not charge for parking, I'm not sure that you'd be able to make it. And we don't, with the HRA tax, it doesn't, none of that comes back to pay for the cost of maintaining parking decks or parking structures or parking lots. So I think that is a challenge for us to look at that. But, you know, we could certainly, you know, dig into some of the rationale about why we do. We have been subsidizing parking overall as a city for a number of years in terms of the investments that we've made in parking. We just invested $9 million in the Warehouse District for 300 and some odd spaces down there. So parking is expensive.
So my understand, and I agree with what you said, but my understanding is that those parking decks, our revenues are around four to four and a half million. The $1.5, my understanding, was for on-street. Was I even correct in that assumption?
No, this is, this would be system-wide. So it's not looking at on-street parking. What we would be looking at is the monthly rates that we're charging in our parking decks as well as the daily rates that we would charge people and the special event fees that we would charge.
So the revenues, the current revenues for the parking decks, I thought it were like, in all the parking, it was $4.5 million. Am I correct in assuming this?
Our overall parking system, if you look on page nine, generate, we're estimating for next year to be about $1.5 million. Overall. That's all the parking fees for monthly rates, on-street parking.
So look at page 13, page 13, 2000. I'm showing parking five point, almost $5.6 million.
Sorry, that is the anticipated spend within the capital improvement plan on parking.
We'll invest in the parking deck lecture. Okay. Thank you very much on this clarification. So looking into our three-ring binder also, maybe that's for you, Patrick, also. It seemed to me, a lot of these projects are, we have a CSO and we have stormwater utility fee. When we start these fees, these projects, my understanding was CSO was downtown, District One and Two, and stormwater is really Three, Four, and Five. Is that still accurate?
Well, our first, again, with new districts, it's kind of changed a little bit. The very first year of the CSO work was actually done in District Three, which now encompasses the North Valley. So the CSO work is going to be predominantly in Districts One, Two, and Three. And then all of our stormwater work is going to be in Districts One through Five, because it's going to be citywide. There's going to be areas, there are areas in District One, there are areas in District Two, there are areas in District Three that are not part of the combined sewer system that will be affected and will have an effect on the stormwater system. And then all of District Four and District Five are part of the stormwater side of our operations.
To you, just last two questions. Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I take too much time.
That's what we're here for, Councilman.
Mr. Craig, tell us, all of us here, talk to us about, number one, my understanding, and there's no, when we're not, or you're not asking, the budget's not asking to issue any new bonds this year. Is that correct?
That is correct. We don't have any planned bond issuances this year. Going back to the conversation on the CSO, we do have about $10 million in planned borrowing from the IEPA for their low-interest loan program, and that was approved as part of the CSO a few years back. And just for, just to kind of remind council, that low-interest loan program traditionally has rates below 1%, which is really not anywhere, somewhere, you can't really get those rates anywhere else.
So just to make sure we all understand, what does IEPA stand for? And how do you account for bonds versus these loans?
Yeah, so IEPA is the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. The bonds, bonds in our, kind of our, we treat these as like a loan payable more than we do a bond. For the most part, operationally, they're handled the same. We have our debt payments, we have our, we have our bond payments, we have our loan payments. For the most part, they are handled the same. The big difference between these two programs is bonds, for the most part, if we're issuing a 20-year bond right now, we're getting close, we're going to have to pay close to 4% on these bonds, or on these loans, we're paying below 1%.
The other aspect is that, is that bonds affect your credit rating, whereas the loan will not?
But it's still a loan, right?
It's still a loan.
Okay. I want to piggyback a little bit on the comment from Mr. Euler. Pensions this year, my understanding, the staff recommendations to pay more money into the pension, right? I thought it was like around $25, $26 million is what we need to pay. But the staff wants us to pay $31 million? Again, I'm just going by memory. Is that about right?
What we're recommending is to fully fund the request of the Police and Fire Pension Boards, which is what their actuary has set, which would be the full, I think this year it would be $31.3 million for those two, the Police and Fire Pension Funds. So it's up about $3.5 million from where we were last year.
So my question to you, Mr. Manager, I know we, as a body, cannot do anything about it. What can you do, or what can the state do to, every year, if we're going into recession or we are in a recession, our debt will go, as the performance of the funds are less and less and going to negative, our liability will increase. What can we do? I mean, that's another $5 million we can use, a lot of our own districts. Moving forward, are you seeing the same type of increase? Do you see our state government to make some changes?
The Illinois Municipal League continues to bang the drum for pension reform. Whether or not there's any appetite from the legislators to make any changes to the system is really up in the air. So what we're limited with doing is what we're doing here, which is to put resources towards filling the hole. The problem that we have with both the Police Pension Fund and the Fire Pension Fund is the problem that probably everyone has, if you've looked at your has, if you've looked at your 401K or your 457 plan this year. The market performance that affects all of our retirement accounts has affected those retirement accounts as well. And the problem is, over the next five years, we're going, they'll, they'll smooth that loss out over five years, but we're going to have to make that up. And those numbers are going to be considerable. So, you know, we're anticipating that, that, while we've moved up to try and, again, chip away at some of the unfunded liabilities which we have, which I think are close to $400 million in both combined in police and fire, it, it will be larger as we look at it over the next couple of years, just simply because of the performance of the fund this past year.
Last question, Mr. Crady. $25 million is, is our liability right now for, for those pensions for the next few years, I think. And also, the, on your budget, we have a line items called other sources, which is also our $25 million. And so the question for that is, this emergency fund that we have has over $50 million right now. Do we have rules as where we can use this money? What, what do we call it in emergency? What's an emergency and not an emergency for, for the city?
In terms of the, the pension amount, the pension amount that we'll have to contribute this year is 31.3 million dollars. As the manager has stated, it more than likely will go up. In terms of looking at the other uses, that is our transfers for our existing debt as well as some of our other transfers from like the general fund to capital, for example, to pay for some of our capital expenditures. So that's what makes up that number. And I forgot the last part of your question.
Well, we're, we're going to have, this slide you had, that page 13, we're looking next five years of a whole of about $30 million. So how will we, basically, is how, how, what are the rules for use our emergency fund? Basically, can it be used for other sources? Can it be used for this shortage? We got to have a $30 million shortage the next five years.
So this is, this is in essence, fund balance within the general fund. So it can be used for general obligations. It can be used to, to transfer to other funds. It's, this is the least restricted of the funds that the city, that the city has.
The general fund, right? What about the emergency, emergency section of that fund, though?
So the, the 25% is the policy that is, in essence, establishing that emergency amount. The amount we're talking about is that 25%, 25 million dollars, we're going to be above that recommendation. So that is the amount that we are wanting to set aside for pension obligations over the next five years.
So it's probably my fault. I'm probably not asking the question correctly, but this emergency fund, what can we use the money for?
Anything.
Anything.
Anything. So there's no, we don't have a, a, a way of knowing what's an emergency, what's not. We never defined that.
It's unrestricted fund balance. So.
But we call it an emergency fund?
No, we call it unrestricted fund balance. And that's what we call it in, and if you look at, if you look at the audit, when they, when they break down where all of our, the last amount that's in that audit in the general fund is the unrestricted fund balance. And that number we're anticipating this year is going to be considerably over policy. And what we're recommending over the next several years is just simply using that to draw it down. Now, we can reserve it and set it aside for pensions, but then use that to draw that down over time so that we're not affecting operations and we're being judicious with the use of those.
So I don't know if my colleagues would be interested in having that conversation later on, but I'm very disappointed to find that out from you. I mean, emergency fund in my line works in emergency fund, and we have definition of what an emergency would be. So if we have an emergency fund within the general fund, but we can use it for ending we want, why are we calling, why do we have that goal of saving 25%?
Well, the 25% is, is, is there, it's really from a cash flow perspective, to make sure that you have enough cash in the bank to be able to pay your bills. And at 25%, that's four months or three months of operating expenses. So that's the reason why we've, we've set that aside at that level.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, Mr. Crady. Great job. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Regal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would echo that comment. Great work in putting all of this together. I know there's a lot of information in here. Some of these may seem like a shotgun approach as far as questions go, some of some data back. And just, just a couple of easy things, I guess, to start with. One, on slide number six and number seven, we are comparing 22 and, and 23 on those revenue estimates. Can we also get a breakdown of where those are? Let's go pre-COVID. Most businesses that I'm working in right now, because 21, 22 have been sort of off-years, even 20, most comparisons now are going back to 2019, assuming that that's more of a normal sort of guideline to be able to, to sort of approach those to. So if, could we just translate those numbers into 2019 numbers? That'd be helpful on that. Real quick, there was a City Hall improvements that's scheduled for 2024. Can we get a breakdown of what those improvements or remodels would be, just so we're aware of those? I think in, in the past, there've been maybe some remodels that we may not have known kind of where that, where they were directed. Easy question so far, maybe for City Manager, any unanticipated lawsuits? And I know it's kind of hard to know what those might be, but if there would ever be any anticipated large lawsuits, do we have anything budgeted currently? I don't think we carry a balance in any fund for those, so those would be taken out from what we see here. Is that correct?
We, yes, we do have some funds set aside for, for pending lawsuits.
And on the sales increases that we've seen for 2022, do we have a breakdown of how many of those are actual transactional increases and how many of those, how much of that sales increase is directly related to inflation or increases in prices?
You want to take that one?
I think the hard part for us to, to break it down in that format would be is, we, for the most part, when we get our information from the state, it's, it's on a gross level. So we kind of have to, we'd be making assumption as to what happened. So I, I don't think we'd have the data per se to be able to answer that.
We might have it by SIC code that we could look at a little bit. And let, let us, let us look at, the state publishes, it's dated, it's not, it's backaways, but maybe we can start to look at the, the, you know, the, there are standard industrial classification codes, SIC, S I C, that, that talk about different types of businesses and where the sales tax comes from. So maybe we can look at, at where that is and we can take a look at some of those estimates for you.
Because, for example, right now, the restaurant industry is showing some huge increases in same-store sales over, over the previous year. However, when you actually break that down, their orders are down, the costs are up, and so they're actually losing transactional value, which in a recession is going to only increase. So I, you know, just from a marketplace. And I appreciate, thank you for, for commenting and putting in the data with the recession. I think it's always smart what you've done there, which is revenue is conservative, expenses, you know, a little bit higher than what you anticipate them to be. And that way, you can always have a little good news on, on all of those. You mentioned that continue to beat the drum. I, I will just throw out here that most music is made with a lot of instruments coming together. So if we have to engage other instruments to help the drum beat be heard and the music be heard about pensions, I think this is going to be one of the things that, we've got some good news, because we have some, some safety in here for a little bit. Am I understanding, are you asking for a lockbox on those anticipated funds so that we can fully set those aside away from the general fund? It, it sounds like you might be asking for a lockbox, we'll set those out into a separate account so that over the next couple of years, we make sure that those are anticipated through 2027?
What, what we would recommend is that we just designate the fund balance towards that effort. So then, instead of it being listed in the audit every year as unrestricted fund balance, it would be reserved up above that, you know, as one of those, those dollars that we've set aside for future, for future needs.
And, and then also on that, slide 27, can we sort of take that slide out to 2020, 2030, so that we can kind of see where that anticipated goes? I know you do show the, the general fund balance dripping below the fund balance policy there, but kind of what that looks like. 20, 2030 is going to be here before we know it, just so we have that kind of as a guideline. What interest rate are you looking at for the next four or five years that the market is going to return? Because obviously, and I think we've mentioned it here, a couple of my colleagues, and you've mentioned it as well, that, that interest that is, the increase of, of stock market value is going to be directly related to our, our pension obligation there as well. So just what you're anticipating or what your model projects there, that would be helpful. I think my colleagues have mentioned part of the other. And then I think, one thing I've asked City Manager is, and I think you're working on, and with finance as well, to look at, if we break out the ARPA dollars and the, the grants that we've gotten in and looking at the operational expenses, removing those sort of one-time dollars that come in, which are important because there's some great capital projects in here, what that looks like at an operational level as we go forward.
Yeah. And I think in, in a lot of ways, you know, we started digging into that. And I think, you know, it's really the, fortunately, all the grant funds are dollars in, dollars out. So the, the net effect is still kind of the same where we are here. And, and really long-term, the, the, the big challenge we have is that more and more of our local resources and our state resources are going to have to go towards covering pension costs in the out years. And so that, this, you know, is really, in a lot of ways, what we're just trying to do is say, we've got unanticipated state revenues now, let's make sure that we can use it for the future kind of judiciously as we look at that.
Great. And then two quick questions. I don't see any money put away for gateway improvements for 2023. That looks like that comes in 2024?
It was, it was budgeted in 2022 for, for both 22 and 23. And then if there is money for 2024, and I'd have to look and see, that would be the next phase of facility-related improvements. What we did is we tried to, we bundled facility-related improvements in this biennial budget for 22 and 23. We issued debt last year to cover those costs, but that's why you're not seeing any facility-related expenses for the most part in this budget.
And then in 2023, we said garbage fees, or not garbage, garbage expense to the city going up. At what point do you anticipate the next sort of drop with the new landfill being opened?
Well, the GFL has, is in their plans right now are to try and open up the landfill as soon as the, the current cell closes, which I think is about a year and a half away from now. So between a year and a half to two years, we should be seeing that that opens up.
24, 25, we might be able to see those, those expense lines come down on that.
Hopefully.
Okay, good. Otherwise, I will save the rest of my questions. I'll, I'll make some appointments this week because I'm, I'm sure with this kind of timeline that you're trying to do the budget, you'd rather get the questions early rather than late.
Absolutely.
So I will, I will follow my colleague and make some appointments. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Regal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Manager and Director Crady. I think in all the years I've been sitting around the horseshoe, this is probably the first budget that we opened not talking about how much we have to cut. So what a breath of fresh air. Looking at the slide presentation first, on the budget summary, revenues up 11.7%, and you say that includes 14.4 of recovery funds. If you take that out, is that just simple arithmetic? Subtract that 14.4 from the 26, 264 point, 264.9 million to figure out how much is, is that actually growth, is what I'm trying to ask. You've got a great, so I, I'm just curious, not counting that 14.4 million, what the percent of revenue growth would be? So.
Yeah, I, I believe the ARPA spending is, in a comparison to 2022, we're up about $2 million in terms of our, our spending. I'm trying to do the rough math in my head, so we got to drop it about 1% in terms of that growth. So it's, that, that growth's only affecting about 1% of that 11.
So we're still double-digit growth in revenue sources, you would say?
Correct.
That's, that's pretty impressive. And going through the PowerPoint, support to other agencies, this might just be semantics, but I would say our contribution to PCAPs, that, that's not really support. I mean, that's, that's a contract we have with them. So again, it, it's money we want to spend and we're spending for something, but I think maybe that's mislabeled there as a support. Now, going to the budget book itself, I, I would echo my colleagues and say the, the focus on pension is, is incredible and something that probably none of us envisioned a year ago as we were sitting around this horseshoe, that we would be in a position to be able to make that kind of dent in it. So whether it's the process you outlined, Mr. Manager, about showing these funds as, what was the term you used?
Designated fund balance or, or reserve fund balance.
Let's, let's put that as much in the lockbox that Councilman Regal references possible so that it's clear that that's our intention through 2027. And I would just remind my colleagues also that the mayor took the bull by the horns after last year's budget, calling in State Representative Gordon Booth in Spain. And Councilman Regal and I sat in with her talking about the various aspects of the pension situation in Springfield and what could be done. And I think unfortunately, that kind of got drowned out with the election year, but I would just say, let's, let's pick that up after November 8th and see what kind of appetite there is. And, you know, whether it's wholesale change, which we would love, or making some tweaks as far as investment choices and whatnot, there, there's a lot of things that could be done. So I think we have the right.
I'm with you.
People on the table. So thank you.
Absolutely.
If I may, just make some random questions here. Mr. Manager, you know, one of my favorite topics is the refuse collection fund balance. If you could give us a little more detail on that, looks like we're going to, the, the fees are up and higher than anticipated collections, but just let us know where that balance stands. I'd like to keep track of that. And then on page 11 in the budget book, you talk about nearly all the ARPA funds will be appropriated in 2023. I was wondering, and we had talked about this in a series of emails today, if you could provide for the whole council, maybe as a report back, how we have spent the money to date and what these appropriations will be so that we can actually, you know, I'm, I'm sure everybody gets the questions from our constituents. You got 47 million bucks? How, what, what are you doing with it? So let's be able to provide that information in a clear format. And talking about, talking about personnel matters, this would be a question for the chief, actually. How, how many slots at the academy do we have going forward? I remember having 30 this year and having struggled with that. So do we know what the number of slots we have for 2023 is?
Good evening. We have slot at 10 for the January Academy and another 10 for the May Academy. But quite frankly, we've had some trouble even filling some of those positions. We have 20 people currently going through the process to lateral, so we, approximately 21 and another two that are lateral, that we don't need to put through the full process. We're going through backgrounds and we're still doing the power test currently to figure out if we're going to be able to fill the 10 slots at the academy for January.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This has been a great discussion, and that's the questions I had for now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Just in follow-up about the ARPA funds, do you anticipate any carryover of any ARPA funds from 2022 into 2023?
We did. There, there were some. And then we, as we adjusted, as we talked about at the policy session. So we'll put together a full kind of detailed layout of what, what council discussed and what was recommended as, as part of that. We'll put that spreadsheet together. It'll break out the, the slide that showed the, the 14 million. We'll talk about where that 14 million is going.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see on page 13 of our binder going into page 14, it has the list of all of the capital improvement or capital projects that are slated for this budget. I see it says, "Most projects recommended for funding in 2020." Is that a typo? Should that be 2023?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Just wanted to clarify that, Director. Thank you. Okay, sounds good. Just wanted to clarify that, Director. Thank you. And one number that stood out to me was the pavement preservation implementation of $960,000. And I know we use that fund to do a lot of those, you know, the pothole patchups and the things of that, and just some of those smaller-scale road projects. Is that in comparable years, is that a, a, a good amount to be allocated to that, that fund?
I'm actually going to ask Director Powers to come up and talk about that.
I'm always rooting for your Director Powers. You know, I know we need these potholes filled, so.
I would say, given the budget and the constraints, it's probably reasonable to say that it is there carrying that amount forward. You're never going to give me enough for pavement preservation. A point being, what we did with the staff recently in converting the part-time to full-time, remember, the first thing we did was crack ceiling. The first line of defense to preventing a puddle. Those are the things we were talking about that are just fundamental. So that would be a drop in the bucket. I'm just being candid with you. But appreciate it.
Yeah, no, and not being a subject matter expert, it did look a little low. And so that's why I wanted to bring it up. But also understand, we have to work within our means. And so I do respect. Thank you so much, Director. This was a very digestible presentation. I look forward to diving more into the budget and having some questions. And like Councilman Ruck Regal said, it's very important that we get those questions in early so we can land this plane on time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ruck Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager or Mr. Craddy, I suppose I should know this, but I do not. If the police and fire pension funds have a good investment year, is our contribution, does our contribution decline that year and vice versa?
Perhaps.
Well, I'm just wondering if, I, I've always kind of had the impression that we're operating on a fixed schedule that doesn't take into account market action.
It, no, it, it does. It, it, what, what the, the actuary does their snapshot every year after their, their fiscal year is concluded. They look at what the numbers are. And just as we may have a bad year that they smooth out over five years, if there's a good year, they smooth that out over five years as well. So really, what we want is five good years is what you really want to be able to smooth that out over, over a longer period of time.
So if we had five good years, our, our current contribution would decline from the old schedule. Is that correct?
It, it would likely still go up, but it may not go up at the rate that it's going. It would, it would, it would, it would probably, you'd start to see that that would move its way down.
Okay, thank you. And I am thrilled, I guess, with most everyone else here with the fact that, never mind the, the, the federal monies we've received, never mind the state money, the extraordinary federal and state monies. Our local sources have, of, of revenue have increased very nicely, much better than what we had projected. It's a nice place to be. I would like us all to consider that there may be some things we can invest in, take, take money and invest in our community that may bring a better long-term return. What I'm speaking of is, I'd love to do tax cuts, but I think that there, it's, I don't know that we have that flexibility. But I think if we made some changes in some of our local sources, giving some of that money back to our constituents, if we do that strategically, I think it may result in greater assessed value than we anticipate, greater sales or commerce than we anticipate. It's a bet. It isn't, it isn't a sure thing. But we're in a position right now where I think we can think about, anyway, through this budget process, some things that we could, I guess you could say, spend our money on, or that we could rebate back to our citizens, to our community in a way that would enhance our tax base ultimately. There are many examples, mostly in income tax, where when income taxes are cut, the amount of revenue that the government receives goes up. When capital gains taxes have been cut, revenue always rises. It doesn't fall. So with that in mind, I'd like us to think about this through this budget, through our budget discussions. Maybe there are things that we could reduce or eliminate that would pay us in dividends in a higher, a higher assessed value or more commerce going on with our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Craddy and Mr. York. This is a very good budget. It's nice to not be in the red, as Councilman Regenbach said. So that always makes the discussions better. I've got a few questions. The first is related to the recommendation for the increase in the parking fees. Can you let us know, you may know, what that increase is going to be?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put, we have a, a whole analysis from Public Works. We'll put that together and have it as a specific agenda item and discussion for you. So.
Okay, thank you. With regards to the anticipated revenue we're going to get from the state with the increased revenue from the PPRT, just want to ask how confident you are that that's going to happen. I know, you know, several years ago, we were in the opposite situation because all of a sudden, we stopped getting that and we, that created huge deficits for us for a number of years.
I, I would say we're extremely confident because we received most of it. I think we're down to two distributions left for the year. So, so we're, we're extremely confident because we have the money in the bank. So that's a good thing.
But even for the future, because that's in the, the future budgets, too.
For, for the future, we're anticipating, we understand that it's a very elastic revenue stream. And so, you know, we're looking at what IML has suggested. I think IML is doing a good job of saying, the revenues are going to decrease, so plan on it. And so we're, we're building that into this budget to try and be cautious in terms of where that goes.
Okay. One question I have, I'm pleased to see that we're receiving this grant for the sidewalk work in 61605. My question is, what about some of the older, other older parts of the city? I mean, the sidewalks in the West Bluff, the East Bluff, the Central Bluff are, are in pretty bad shape, and they have been for years. And we just have never had the money to do anything about it. So I would like to make that a priority. And I don't know if now is the time to do it since we have extra revenue. I know we, the, the grant is probably limited to 61605. I'm disappointed in that. I think it should have included all the older neighborhoods.
So the, the, the grant is limited to 61605, but we, we are anticipating in 2023 that we have our sidewalk transition plan, oh, excuse me, no, I apologize for that. That's 2025. We are anticipating that between this year's budget, where we're carrying over some of the ARPA funds, and then next year of 810,000, that we should have about 1.6 to 1.7 million dollars of money for sidewalks in this budget that would be outside of that 61605 area.
I just want to reiterate, I want to make sure that's a priority in these older neighborhoods. I think Councilman Grab brought to my attention a few weeks ago that we no longer have the old sidewalk participation program. And I think that's been detrimental in some of these neighborhoods.
It's, it, and maybe if I could ask Director Powers to come up and just explain the challenges with the sidewalk participation program, the problems that we had getting actual contractors to bid on the work?
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good question. Actually, the first challenge, because there are really two, was that just that the, with the economy being what it is, sidewalks, as broad as the problem is, citywide, it's piecework when you're looking in this economy and what a contractor will bid on. And when we put those packages together, invariably, you find someone moving to do 10 feet of sidewalk here, 20 feet of sidewalk here throughout the city. It's just not a popular proposition and cost-effective for the city to try to bid that way. The second part of that was quite frankly, equitability. I'll just put it this way, if I am of a lower income than you in the sidewalk participation, or former sidewalk participation, you could be directly across the street from me and afford new sidewalk, and I could not because of my income, my program, and tried to be more, I guess, scientific and take it from an engineering approach as to where we would spend the dollars citywide. That's, that's the bottom line on this. We are, again, in the process of rating, we have a really rated sidewalk up to now. We're kind of going into an overall comprehensive asset management plan that goes beyond what you're used to hearing PCI, which is really between the curves. We need to broaden that into our overall infrastructure plan and asset management plan, sidewalks included. And then where we spend, being a priority based upon condition. And everyone would argue their condition is the worst. And there is a lot of bad sidewalk in the city. To the bigger discussion that Councilor Allen made, there is a lot of, but I agree with you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hoping and looking forward to seeing that, those reports and to making that a priority as, as an entire council.
Meaning you would like to see an increased spend on what we have programmed.
I would, in those, in the older neighborhoods, at least.
Okay.
I've got a couple more.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm, well, I just want to make a quick comment. I'm glad to see, and very supportive of adding the staff and the legal department to start putting liens on properties for fines and fees. That came to my attention several years ago. I couldn't believe it. And I know we've been advocating to get that going again, so I'm glad to see that's included in this budget. As a follow-up to the, the recommendation for the additional person for the diversity and inclusion, I know you're preparing a report back for Councilman Euler. I guess the department does. I mean, one of the things it says this person will do will be taking complaints. My understanding was that this, this diversity officer was just for the city, the city of Peoria, that entity, and for the employees. But now are we talking about expanding it so it's citywide, like the EEOC office used to be at the city?
There's just, there's more work than one person can handle right now with the department. And so when it was the equal employment opportunity function that was in HR or was actually in the manager's office for a while, we had two or three people that were working in this function. So it's just changed over time. And with the focus and effort on diversity, equity, and inclusion, there's more work, more training, more need for staff. We have a new, you know, trying to drive a larger minority business directory throughout the community that's not just construction-related. And that takes time and effort as well to work through that process. So we'll be happy to put a report back together that talks about and summarizes all of that.
Okay, thank you. I think I have just a couple more. One question I have, with regards to the, the city council budget, you mentioned that there's a $35,000 mentoring grant that we received. Does that, are we limited to what that money can be used for? Is that for mentoring ourselves, for going to professional development, or for mentoring others, or?
Maybe I'll look to the mayor who is, has been working to, to, to explain the, the $35,000 mentoring grant from the PNC Foundation.
Right. There's a, Brian Ray, President of PNC, approached me about a role model program that targets youth in the African-American community. So it's really a mentoring program that matches role models with youth within Peoria Public Schools.
So who would be the mentors? The, the mayor and the city council members?
No, it would be people in the community, like professionals matching youth or, or identifying role models within the community to highlight to youth in the community.
Okay, so it's not really, it's not really part of our budget for things that, that we?
It, it would be specific to the PNC's guidelines and program. They had a list of possible programs. It's an equity initiative. And so I gave them a list of six, six different possibilities, and the role model project is what they identified. It's not funded yet. It's under consideration.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, is that Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
I'll, I'll get to you in just a moment. I have
Okay.
our person in front of you before Councilwoman Jensen gets done.
I, I think that was my last question. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
It seems to me that city government should reflect the values of the people we represent with the Peoria City Council. Those people we represent want to see certain behaviors encouraged and other behaviors discouraged. Now, I might have a peculiar perspective on this. It wouldn't be the first time I've had a peculiar perspective and probably not the last time. But everywhere I go, whatever neighborhood association I visit, and quite a few since the pandemic loosened its grip on our country, I get the complaint, we heard it last night, in the Orchard District, Superintendent Escheveria, the complaint about disrespectful motorists who shatter the tranquility of our neighborhoods, who go the wrong way down streets, who do wheelies downtown, who are speeding, have no concern about children in school zones or anywhere else. And we have, at the same time, I'm articulating this, we have a very cruel situation where we are barely able to keep up with the call load that comes in, over a million calls a year to our call center, some more serious items, although these are serious, too. And so our police department must utilize the manpower, woman power it has right now to go after those who would bring violence to our community, those who are wielding guns, both adults and juveniles. So our neighborhoods are kind of like in the lurch. And at some point, I think the council must wrestle with the question, at what point does more aggressive enforcement of our rules of the road translate into removal of criminals from the streets who may be driving through our city, outstanding warrants, weapons in the vehicle, et cetera? And to what extent, too, if we had a robust traffic enforcement program, that might translate into dollars into our treasury? Not that that would be the principal aim of it. It is to have a safer community where there is a better quality of life for all. And I'm fully aware, I read the report And I'm fully aware, I read the reports that all of you get every day of the number of guns that are being removed from the hands of children. I'm fully aware of the number of funerals that we have had in this community over the past several years. But at some point in time, we have to get the strength of our police department up to where we can slow the cars down and do things that we used to be able to do, like traffic enforcement. The monetary aspect again is secondary because we get people saying all the time, well, the only reason you give tickets is because you're trying to swell your treasury. But go where I go. I go where you go. I have people volunteering their driveways for a police car to sit there and to stop some of this awful speeding that's occurring, all times of the day and night. We right now have a shortage of officers. Every time I ask the chief for the number of officers we currently have employed in the city of Peoria, it seems like that number just never goes up very much for various reasons. We need we're nowhere near our authorized strength of 222. We've had 255 before, just in the years I've been around here. We've been as low as 180. So when we have the ability to do to augment the current staffing issues we're going to have, and I don't know how many more years, it's going to be a challenge to get the numbers up to where they need to be for safety. We need to consider the use of technologies that will help rein in motorists who whose very vehicles have become weapons of mass destruction or potentially weapons of mass destruction. And that's why I floated the idea, and I'm not making a pitch, because nothing's going to happen until the spring session of our general assembly. That's why I brought up the idea of utilization of technology. If we had enough officers to go around, we wouldn't need to look at some of these technologies like automated license plate readers, red light cameras, et cetera. And it's going to be a real heavy lift based on what the state law looks like to get speed cameras. Red light cameras aren't the same thing as speed cameras. Speed camera would be on your street and it could maybe issue a ticket if it detected that somebody is going 60 miles an hour down High Street instead of the posted speed of 25. That's not what our state lawmakers have been asked to do by the vote of this council. They have been asked to give us the same right eight counties have in Northern Illinois and Chicagoland area in Chicago, to generate tickets for red light violations, probably to be used at some of our high impact intersections with the capability of artificial intelligence to keep a light from being phased when we know some fool has no chance of stopping in time. So these new technologies must be used in the meantime, I think, to rein in some of the motorists that that are speeding through our city and in our neighborhoods. It's the number one complaint I get wherever I go in the city, speeding automobiles and a disrespect for the people of Peoria. However, we do know this. While we hear that people want more robust traffic enforcement, when we go into their neighborhoods, this too many years of experience, but when we go into their neighborhoods and we start to issue tickets, 42, 43% of all the people getting the tickets are those who live in that neighborhood. So we can't have it both ways. I was talking to former officials who have served on this body and they said, you know, if you do some of this camera work, you know, maybe there'll be quite a bit of money coming in. It'll be a concomitant impact, but a nice impact. Put it toward pensions or whatever you want to put it toward city council. But eventually, you know, that revenue will drop, at least for the people living in your city, because they'll know that they could get a ticket. And that's the whole idea of modification of behavior. We're trying to modify behavior. I'm going to be more careful when I'm driving when I know that there's the possibility that I could get pulled over for going 55 miles per hour in a 30 mile per hour zone. We're all human. But when I know that there it's very unlikely that there's going to be any law enforcement impact on my aberrant driving conduct, I'm not going to necessarily be a very good person. And then if I'm a criminal on top of that, and I have no respect for my fellow man or for any neighborhood, much less where that person lives, it's only going to aggravate things. Now, I'll tell you this. If we don't take care of some of these quality of life issues, like people who are disrespectful to their neighbors, people who will not take care of their properties, kids who are carrying guns, fights that are occurring in schools, Peoria is not going to be an attractive place to live, even though it should be because our best days are ahead if we make that so. One other aspect that I would throw in, and this is something to think about. Number of years ago, the council just couldn't figure out why we had all these people who are going to the Central Illinois Regional Airport down in Bloomington Normal to fly places. They just the council couldn't figure it out. We had endless debates about it. Well, lo and behold, we found out that the Central Illinois Regional Airport had something called free parking. Free parking. Can you imagine that? Well, it's really not free, but guess what? They were killing us. I forget the numbers. We're 100,000 people going there and we were losing business in Peoria. We want everybody to fly out of the greatest airport in the city in the state. And that's our own airport, which by the way is about to have some investment put into it, control tower, which needed for years. But we got smart and guess what? We have what now? Free parking. So we want to incentivize people to come back downtown. We want to make it as easy as possible for people to park without getting a ticket. Because many years ago, when we went downtown, we had to pay to park. That was the retail hub. But the minute you started to get a Sheridan Village and then all the other shopping centers that grew up with free parking, and that was in their advertising jingle, things started to change. So I think we need to take a look at what we're doing with parking, especially as our city becomes even more robust and well developed with all the projects that manager and I have discussed and kind of explored and reviewed with the Downtown Advisory Commission. We need to start taking a look at encouraging those behaviors that are good for our taxpayers and using the instruments of government to discourage those those behaviors that are injurious to our city. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have just the three observations I wanted to just bring up. The city manager talked about federal dollars that potentially could be coming to the area. Last year during this time, we were also talking about the impact of President Biden's infrastructure program. I I haven't heard anything about it. And the reason for its relevance is, you know, once the money rolled out, it certainly would free up some funds for within the city budget. Has there been any movement or discussion on that? And have we heard?
Councilwoman, yes, there has. The Northmore and University intersection, which is really touches the districts two, three, four, and five. It is scheduled for improvement in 2026, I believe. There is some federal funds that is tied to that that was awarded through the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. So that's coming out of the the infrastructure bill. If we're successful in receiving the mega grant that we've applied for that we haven't heard yet, we're still in the running, that would be money that would be coming out of the federal infrastructure bill as well. So and then hopefully we'll see that that there's more funds that will be released to the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission for allocation across the region as well.
And I would So there's potentially more money that could be coming?
Potentially more. It it will likely come through the existing program. So that would be money allocated to the to the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. And then they would allocate those funds on a competitive basis throughout the region. There's also the two applications that we've talked about for rail are part of that infrastructure bill. So that rail effort is something and the the Smart City application that we're looking to pursue is also part of the federal infrastructure program as well.
And I would add, Council Councilwoman Jackson, that there's also some broadband funding that has been sent to the state. It hasn't made its way throughout the cities within the state. I think the governor's office has put together a plan for that rollout, but that's to help with broadband throughout various parts of the city.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, I'm paging the budget booklet, page 14, and I I didn't hear if this is much mention about it, but I'm just going to assume that you talked about funding potentially the for Harrison demolition. McKinley, does that fall anywhere on our demolition program for the coming year? I know we had talked about that last year and I recently was given an update. So I was kind of under the impression that those two projects were going to go forward in this next budget year.
That that's correct, but they're going to they're going to be going forward with money that we've already appropriated. Maybe if I could ask Director Doolin to come up to the to the microphone to just give everyone a quick update of what we are with the the demolition projects for both Harrison and McKinley?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, good news. We issued the RFP for the demolition of Harrison McKinley last week. Actually did site visits today. Had about 30 contractors show up and toured McKinley and Harrison, contractors for demo and environmental remediation. So the timeline, the the second meeting in November, the RFP will be coming back to you for approval with demolition starting the third or fourth week of December with the completion timeline of both buildings being down and both sites being clear by the end of May of 2023. The next council meeting, we'll be receiving the agreement from HUD. We got notified last Monday that the agreement is actually complete and we can authorize to to spend that money, which is one of the major steps we're waiting on to. So within the next six, seven months, both properties will be down. And over that time, we'll be engaging with the neighborhoods to see kind of what's what's the next steps in both those properties.
Thank you. And the first thing that I wanted to talk about, we have a road problem, a serious road problem in the first district. And it's in the area of 300 Kickapoo Terrace. And it's probably the worst road in the city. It's not a long stretch of roadway, but I had an opportunity to go up there and it the road is in such horrid condition that we if we continue to not do anything with it, it's probably going to continue to become more expensive just to repair it. So my question was if the council would consider, since we have been collecting stormwater utility funds since 2018, consider an amendment to the budget to include that small stretch of Kickapoo Terrace as a pavement preservation project. I would hate to see residents up there go through another winter and possibly a spring season with the amount of drainage that occurs. It would just be terrible. So if there's a possibility that we could consider amending the budget to include pavement preservation for that stretch, small stretch of Kickapoo Terrace, it would be greatly appreciated. I think the expense is somewhere of maybe $550,000, but we've got 20 million in stormwater fees to spend. So it would seem to me that that would be the perfect stormwater utility project for the residents in that area. They paid into it.
We'd be happy to to put it back together for you, Councilwoman, and put that into the packet for next week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just so I I just wanted to, you know, bring back a few thoughts from last week. So I I don't know if council knew, there was a group of site selectors that came to evaluate Peoria as the biomanufacturing hub. Like everybody, I went to the meeting thinking that all is well, okay? But when and and the evaluators appreciated our assets in the community. They said we have certain things that we can work on, we can strengthen. But then the result, the the outcome they gave was quite hard hitting. So meaning it it their their implications not only reflected the biotech landscape, but also the entire business landscape that is happening in the city of Peoria. So so as we as we, you know, get into the budget session, you know, I I requested Mr. Seddy to see if we can get that report back, but he said by the next meeting. But what the main thing here is that we, as a council, you know, and personally, I would see that, you know, we need to come up with the with the, you know, appropriations for new businesses, especially, I'll tell you an example. When Caterpillar came, I mean, this is my personal opinion, but when Caterpillar came, it's a magnet. It attracted several ancillary companies. Now, now the things changed and it's healthcare. So healthcare, biopharma, biotech, all these things. When you drive from the Mirror Bridge, we see nothing but healthcare. So looking forward, we'll have more of healthcare entities in Peoria. So I I just wanted to make sure that I represent that section to the council to to think through the process of how do we really, you know, strengthen our abilities to attract new biotech companies. And there are there are certain certain things that we could do because I I visited Indianapolis. The way they did was The way they did was, it's, I mean, it's more I'm throwing out of book, but the way they did was, the city will allocate maybe a 50 grand to a biotech company with the promise to stay in Peoria, in that particular city for three, four years, and, and then with the promise that the city will, city is going to help them, you know, with their rent or residence, I don't know what that is. But, but in reality, what, what we could do here is we could do the same mechanism with a, with a key that these businesses should be opened in downtown. So in a, in a way, we revitalize the downtown. At the same time, we build a bioinfrastructure. So this is just a start of my thought process, but I would really appreciate people in the council to, to think through this and then, you know, help me understand whether it is a possibility or not. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, can, that visit, site selection visit, was hosted by Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, and it had several sponsors. Can we get ahold of that final presentation report?
Yeah.
And send it to council members?
My understanding is that there's going to be a written report that's going to come with that, and, but I'll confirm that with the GPEDC CEO, and make sure that we get some information back in the council's hands on that.
Okay.
Because there was a big, a big report out that they had last week, and I think that information would be beneficial for council to hear and read, so.
Okay, thank you. Whatever time they're able to release it to us. Thank you. More comments or questions? Well, I want to thank our manager, as well as Director Craddy, for all the effort and work that you've put into the budget. Again, we're in a strong position. We're hopefully going to be in a strong position moving forward for, for years to come. So thank you to all the members of the council for your questions, for your contributions, for your comments and discussion tonight. If there's no more discussion, I will ask for a motion to receive and file. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Do you have any cards?
No, I do not.
Okay, so...
We are at executive session.
Counsel Hayes, do we have one?
I have one brief matter, so I would invite a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 to C 11, to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, all right. So I would ask for a motion to go into exec, and we're going to close out after that. Please cast your ballots. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.